Regular meeting on December 1st, 2025 to order. We will start with our roll call. City Clerk.
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Thank you, City Clerk. We will now move on to purpose of our special meeting. Item number two, study session, tenant protection, and I will direct that to city staff.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Lopez, members of council, public. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Leslie Mendez, and I am the Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. And tonight we are having a study slash public comment session for tenant protection policies. Okay, so the purpose of this study session is to implement Housing Element Program 5D, which is our Housing Element Program that looks to evaluate tenant protection measures for the city of Albany. It is specifically to provide the public additional opportunity to express their thoughts and ideas on the value of potential local provisions related to tenant protection policies, specifically anti-harassment and non-discrimination, just cause for eviction, and rent stabilization. So the Housing Advisory Commission, or the HAC, was established by council last year, and it was established as a forum to discuss housing element programs related to tenant protection policies and programs. Every month, they've been meeting and discussing a specific topic in depth. In March, it was anti-harassment and non-discrimination. April, just cause for eviction. May, rent stabilization. June was the review of the city's rent review program. In July, it was access to legal counsel. The last two meetings were reserved to identify both areas of consensus of the commission, as well as ranges of disparity, related to tenant protection policies, which was in September, and tenant protection programs, and education and outreach, which was in October. It was a September meeting in particular where the HAC discussed a number of specific policy measures, and a few members of the public did not feel that they had adequate time to express their thoughts and opinions on tenant protection measures, which is why we are here tonight. So tonight's discussion, I've laid out a few of the items that were discussed by the HAC in September. These items that I'll go through very briefly are meant to sort of guide the discussion, but in no way limit it. We would love to hear any ideas that you may have, or thoughts and opinions that are outside of the box or related to these in particular. So for anti-harassment and non-discrimination, it would be to add additional protected categories over those required by the state, and define specific harassing behaviors, again, over and above those identified by the state. For just cause for eviction, it's to eliminate the current sunset date of January 1st, 2030, as well expand the types of units that would be covered. For rent stabilization, it would also be to eliminate the sunset date, as well as to cap the annual rent increase below the state limit, which is currently 10% per year. So if you notice that our staff report this evening was very brief, again, I want to reiterate that this was to elicit public comment. Staff has been gathering all the public comment, as well as commission comments, from the year of HAC meetings, and we will be presenting that in an analysis report to present to you in early next year. And part of that will present what we heard, the data, as well as our peer jurisdiction research, and to get next steps from you. So tonight really is to listen, as well as if you have any ideas of what you would like us to include in that report, please let us know as well. So again, next steps is for the public comment and HAC areas of consensus, we will be incorporating into a report that we will present to you all in early, what we expect to be January of next year, for direction on potential ordinance development, programmatic initiatives, enhanced enforcement, or other strategies to strengthen tenant protections in the city. And that is the extent of my report, so I'm here for any questions, and then we can turn it over to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it to council. Any questions at this moment from any of you?
Mayor, if I may, just want to acknowledge that in the past I have recused myself out of abundance of caution about anything to do with potentially rental properties because of a financial interest in rental property in Albany. We have, sorry, city attorney has reached out to FPPC, and we've received notice that I can participate in all discussions related to the housing element implementation. Just want to get that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, staff. The staff report said that with regard to rent stabilization measures, there was a commissioner who supported them if they were means tested. I'm curious if that's legal, to have a means testing of rent stabilization measures?
Well, we have a city attorney here, but it's my understanding that it might be not the safest legal grounds to have means testing. When we move forward in January, we will have more information on any potential illegal elements, because we won't want to be doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any questions from council at this time. I will bring this over to City Clerk for public comment.
Those who would like to speak, public comment, if you can draw a card or if you can line up behind the podium. The first one is Bell Adler.
I'm going to read some prepared statements, so I can do it faster. Thank you for letting me address the commission, the council. I'll be brief. I want to start by saying that I think that there's a narrative that all landlords are these wealthy, greedy one percenters, and are making all kinds of money and gouging tenants. And I want to point out that, in fact, many of us have one or two units, or maybe even rent a room, in order to supplement our fixed incomes. We were originally promised and given incentives to build ADUs. I actually gave up a third of my yard to build an ADU. We were told that this would help the supply of apartments in Albany, which actually would depress the rents, which they have. We were under the impression that we were exempt from these rent caps, these rent increase caps, and it's sort of a bait and switch maneuver that it looks like you're now considering taking those away, those exemptions, and also lowering the state caps. Here we are, we're getting lower rents because of increased supply that we provided, the city, and now we're basically being punished. Let me give you an idea of how onerous these lowered caps would be, and I'll ballpark my costs, because every year they change. For my one unit, I gave up, as I said, a third of my yard. I have to pay income tax on the rent, one unit, increased property tax, which goes up about 2% a year. I have to pay insurance costs on a rental property, and those go up every year. And they're way higher than insurance when you live in an apartment, the thinking being that a renter doesn't take care of the space as well as a homeowner. So they really kill you on that one. I have to pay the bank upwards of $600 or $700 a month to repay my home equity loan, which I took out in order to build the ADU. I pay for Wi-Fi, garbage, and water, all of which increase from time to time. Not every year, but they do increase, and they'll probably go up next year. All that means that each month I only make somewhere between $300 and $350 a month. But wait, then I have other costs that aren't monthly costs. They don't cost every month. But in effect, I have to pay an extra $50 a month for things like gutter cleaning, the business license that I do have, mulching or lawn care, taking a tree removal, any repairs, painting, advertising for renters, and all that eats into that $300 or $350. So now, on average, I'm about to $200 a month. Frankly, if this goes through, the whole enterprise of building the ADU was just not worth the trouble. We were given a set of regulations, given some promises, and now I see they may be changed.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I hope you'll consider that. We're not the bad guys.
So we have Dawn and Bryce.
Can you people speak into your microphone, so all of us could hear?
I'm kind of short, but I'll move on.
No, you do. Especially the mayor.
Hi, I'm Dawn Kawamoto. I'm an Albany resident and landlord. Rent control is going to reduce access to housing. I recently spoke to someone whose parents live in a rent-controlled apartment in Los Angeles. They've lived there for 20 years. His parents, two years ago, they moved back home to Bangladesh, and he's paying the rent for his parents on their apartment in Los Angeles, as well as his apartment in the Bay Area. And I'm like, why are you doing this? And he said, well, it's because rent is so cheap. He said, you know, and I said, well, you know, California has a housing shortage. Why not rent it? Why not even? And he says, well, you know, my parents, in case they want to come back to visit, or if I want to be in Los Angeles, we'll have a place to stay. We call it our Los Angeles vacation home. I said, really? And so anyways, you know, I was very disappointed in hearing this. But he's not alone in this story. You know, there are cases, I've talked to some Albany residents who have friends who have apartments in Berkeley, rent-controlled apartments in Berkeley. And one of them, I was shocked, she moved away from her Berkeley apartment, but then she sub-leased it at market rates, even though she was paying her landlord the rent-controlled price. And she was taking that profit margin she was getting, and she used it to buy a house outside the Bay Area. So the thing is, you know, the city of Berkeley, you know, are these situations helping the city of Berkeley meet its goals for affordable housing and more housing? Is it helping the city of Los Angeles with its rent control meet its housing needs? You know, I think the answer is probably no. Also, I was kind of disappointed with our Albany Housing Commission. They had an opportunity to ensure the city of Albany is not going to end up like Los Angeles or Berkeley. And when Housing Commissioner Daniel Winkler, and I think rightly so, demanded that if there's going to be Albany rent control, that means testing be part of it. But the other four housing commissioners, Aaron Tiederman, Marjorie Marx, Rosanna Ramirez, and Noel Cantu, they voted against means testing. And Tiederman said it was expensive to do so. But the problem is, it's going to be expensive in the cost of hurting Albany's affordable housing or housing stock if this is passed. And means testing would be a way to kind of ensure that every year tenants who are living in rent-controlled apartments, that their occupancy and income are verified every year, and prevent Albany from becoming another Los Angeles or Berkeley story. And then I just want to throw out, I'm a big supporter of Section 8 housing. And let Section 8 housing, let the county do the means testing for us.
Thank you for your comment.
And housing will provide the affordability.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, guess I'm a little taller. Okay, hello. My name is Bryce Nesbit, and I'm bringing a different perspective here. I don't own rental property. I don't rent. So why am I here? I am a property inspector, so I have inspected hundreds of apartments, and I speak to everyone. I speak to every resident that I'm allowed to speak to, and I talk to the owners. And I've seen it all, quite a range of things. And when you are considering, I also helped author the city's rental housing safety inspection form. So if you go and do that checklist, some of my words are in there. When you have a strong just cause, you have a number of probably unintended consequences. Among them, really bad actors can continue to be bad, because there's nothing that can be done about it. So you have a protection that's flipside. It protects perfectly good renters from unreasonable landlords. The other side of that same coin is protecting completely unreasonable tenants from good landlords. It's a really tough problem. Beyond that, just cause, strong just cause, creates a significant disadvantage, disincentive to creating informal housing. Used to be in Berkeley, everybody, and the mayor, had an in-law unit, an unpermitted illegal in-law unit, because there was no method to create one. So people just created those. Now, I've been consultant on dozens of cases of the owners removing those units from the market and turning them into extra space in their house for storage. Why? Entirely because of the just cause worry, the worry that they will get a tenant who doesn't work for their lifestyle, and then there is no way to end that relationship. Think very carefully before you move down the rent control world. It's extremely complex, and you tend to add layer after layer of mandate or fix to it. For example, people leave units vacant. Ah, so now we've got to add a vacancy tax. You're adding layer upon layer upon layer upon what are broken incentives for everybody to be a good actor. Means testing as well, great idea. I really think there's some merit to it, but it's complicated. Because if you go for means testing, you will also create an incentive for owners to avoid tenants who have limited means. We don't want that. What we really want is we want those people who are the lowest income to have as many opportunities as possible to rent. And people with criminal backgrounds, same thing. Berkeley did criminal background history, and now it has unfortunately resulted in it being even harder
Thank you for your comment.
Mike Z and Michelle S. Mike? Mike Z?
Hello, my name is Mike Zojaji. I'm an immigrant and a resident of Albany for 20 years. I searched the web really hard to find a document that mentions the recommendations by the HAC, and I couldn't find it. There was meetings, there was, so I couldn't find a document that mentions the recommendations made by the HAC. So it's really hard to provide comments on something you haven't seen. There were meetings and changes to what verbally were, there were talked about, some slides. So we don't know what it looks like. So it's really, really hard to provide input, something that we don't have, not only for me, and I speak, I can, for everyone else here. It would be really democratic and correct and just to provide that document to people who can actually look at it and provide the comment rather than two-minute, three-minute comment about a really, really complex issue. And I assume a dozen or so proposals, each of which is extremely complex. So in absence of such information and documentation, I'm just going to make some general comments. Number one, never make anything permanent. There's plenty of studies that say there are unintended consequences. Once you make something permanent, like a rent control, it will be really hard to undo. There are many people, many, many counties and cities who want to undo things, including city of Berkeley, and they have a hard time after decades of rent control. So never make things permanent. Second thing, there's suggestions to eliminate mom and pop or single-family homes from some of these rent controls. This is completely nonsensical. It was for a reason. The state put that in, and people are talking about it. I'm a single-family homeowner, and I know how hard it is, how expensive it is to live here, to pay taxes and so on. So forget about eliminating those exclusions. Second, the third thing is, please do not create a monumental, pyroquacous city of Albany. We're a really small town. We are not Berkeley. We are not Oakland. We do not need to create a whole group of people sitting here and monitoring things. It costs a lot of money, and we could do better with the effort to do something else with this town. Last thing I want to say is, there's a lot of emphasis on protection, rent control, or rent stabilization, which is rent control in disguise. How about production? Really, production, if you have more rental housing, it will stabilize the prices. So why don't we focus on that as well, and not just work on rent control and tenant protection? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
After Michelle is Nancy R.
Hi, my name's Michelle. We are a small housing provider in Albany. So rent control, to put it simply, what you're asking the housing providers to do is to subsidize people's rent. And what you're really asking is for any renters that comes after rent control is implemented to subsidize those existing renters' rent. And is that really fair? And first of all, I really don't think it's necessary. I'm sure everyone is aware there is a state rent control. It's 5% plus CPI. And CPI this year is merely 1%, and that's 6%. You may think, oh, wow, good for you. You guys get to increase your rent by 6%. Okay, here's some real numbers from our other small property in a rent-controlled city in Alameda County. So in 2023, our insurance cost was $2,854. 2024, $3,927. That's a 38% increase. In 2025, it's $5,867. That's a 49% increase. Utilities, $4,591 in 2023, went up to $5,787. That's a 26% increase. Went up to $7,482, and that's another 29% increase from 2024 to 2025. And in addition to that, that's on our property tax, there is 1.9% increase from '23 to '24, and then another 3.2% increase from '24 to '25. And that's just normal operation cost. And you may be wondering, well, you get to have higher rent year over year, right? Okay, our total income in 2023 was $124,911. In 2024, $125,682. That's 0.6% increase. And from '24 to '25, it went up to $127,879, 1.7% increase. So I want to ask you, how do you want us to run a business? We are law-abiding business operators. We're, we're providing housing, but we're also entitled to some, to some profit. And this is, God forbid, if we have bigger expenses like a renovation, like, like, what you're really forcing us to do is to sell our property if we cannot run a business and make a profit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
After Nancy is Katie V.
Hi, my name is Nancy Roberts. I'm a resident in Albany, and I also own a condo on Pierce Street that was a retirement investment that I've owned for 28 years. And over that time, I've never evicted anybody. I, I want long-term renters. I don't tend to raise the rent. But if there's going to be rent control, I'm going to have to raise it every year to make sure I can sustain the increases like this other woman mentioned. And I've been here before. I feel like it's Groundhog Day. I thought we had these issues resolved when, when Measure R was defeated and when the composition of this council changed. And here we are again. And if this goes through, I won't evict the tenant that's there now, but with the costs that are, what, what my increases in insurance and, and taxes and everything else, I will take it off the market and sell it. And what's going to happen is it's going to take a unit most likely off the rental market because it's either going to be bought by somebody who is going to be owner-occupied, or the other option is probably going to be some corporate landlord. And that's, that's not what I want for tenants. You know, I, I, I think the mom-and-pop landlords, at least when I was a tenant, I much more appreciated somebody I could go to, talk to, and not have a corporation running it. And, and I also have the same concerns about what rent control does to a community. I think landlords were less likely to maintain units. And again, they'll be like me, they'll want to sell it, and it'll be bought by owner-occupied or, or corporations. So those are my concerns.
Thank you for your comment.
Katie? After Katie is Seth F.
Hi, good evening, Council. Thanks for your time. My name is Katie Hill McLanahan. I am a homeowner in Albany. And full disclosure, I am also a landlord, but not in Albany. You might expect me therefore to be speaking against rent stabilization, but I'm strongly in favor of it. Because before I am either of those things, I'm a member of this community, and I'm a parent, and I'm a neighbor. About half of Albany residents are renters. I am not sure that half the people in this room are renters, but I would urge everyone to bear that in mind as we take our turns speaking. Half of Albany. When we talk about rental protections, we're talking then about rules and regulations that benefit half of Albany residents. And when we lack, as we do today, rental protections in our city, then we're jeopardizing the well-being of those residents. As you know, we're in a housing crisis in our state, a homelessness crisis. The thing that happens right before you become homeless is you are evicted. Anything we can do to prevent that happening to our neighbors and our community members, we must do. I want to share for those unaware that many families here in our town are renters. I would say it is probably a majority of families in Albany based on the families I know. So we're also talking about bringing the housing crisis home to the families of Albany. I'm not certain whether it is the case that half the people in this room who will speak tonight are the parents of school-aged children, so I would ask that you keep that in mind as well and ask who's not here. Think about them too, please. Housing instability hurts the families in our town. I have had see, I have seen neighbors have to move because they were evicted to no fault of their own. And this is what we mean when we talk about just cause eviction. There should be a just reason. People have also had to leave Albany because the rent is too high, and a 10% increase per year is much, much too high. Our neighboring cities in Berkeley, Richmond, San Francisco, just to name a few, all have rent stabilization boards who set rent increases yearly. I hear the landlords who have been concerned about the cost of maintenance, and it is possible in those cities to petition if your cost of maintenance, for some reason, exceeds your allowable rent increase that year. So there is a provision for that. In conclusion, just please continue to think about those who are not here because they are our neighbors.
Thank you for your comment.
After Seth would be Lois.
Hi, I'm Seth Franklin. I'm a, I own a house in Albany. I'm a landlord in another city. I'm, I'm also a Realtor, and I spend a lot of time with these issues. And I think it's really complicated, and what I encourage is simplicity. Like, I've seen nightmares on both sides. I have seen anecdotes of, you know, abusive landlords in excessive numbers. I've seen discussions of, you know, problematic tenants, and I've seen them firsthand. I'm in Berkeley and elsewhere. I'm, and I think that some rent protection is a good thing. I think finding a way to balance it is extremely hard because you end up with only black and white lines. I'm, you know, one of the things I see that's most problematic that I really want to speak out to as a concern is, the Berkeley Rent Board has become a de facto court system for a whole range of things that really it shouldn't. And it's just a classic example of something metastasizing. So I'm, while I do support generally some form of rent protection, because I've seen terrible things, I'm, finding some balance is just essential and trying to find, and the key, I think, to balance is starting simple, finding things that can be modified later times, trying not to lock yourself into a, a specific path in either direction so that you can continue to be responsible. We're a small town. One of the benefits of being a small town should be the ability to be responsive, right? To be able to turn more quickly, to, to be more flexible. The downside is it's much harder to look at things like the cost of means, means testing and the viability. Even just the risk of being sued about means testing is expensive on its own. Finding solutions that seem simple versus finding solutions that are simple is very different. I wish I had something more productive and specific to recommend, but that's it. As I would just try to find moderate grounds, try to find things that will make everybody upset, because that probably means you're making good compromises. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
After Lois would be Chris Tipton.
Okay, hi. I'm here tonight to present myself as a typical Albany landlord. I'm a mom-and-pop. I've been renting housing for 40 years in Albany, and I have Iranian tenants, Chinese tenants, Mexican tenants. In the 40 years that I've been renting out, I've had one eviction. My tenants stay with me for 25 years, 15 years, 18 years. You know, Albany's a small town, and the mom-and-pops are small-town realtors or renters, I should say, or landlords. And I think that all these rules and regulations are just driving a wedge between me and my tenants. And I hope you take into consideration that Albany landlords are not New York City landlords, and we have one-on-one with our tenants, and take pride in that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chris?
Hi, Councilmembers. My name is Chris Tipton. I'm with the East Bay Rental Housing Association. We're an association that has about 1,500 members throughout the Contra Costa and Alameda Counties, and we work with a lot of rental housing providers that have properties in Albany, in Richmond, in Concord, in, in Oakland that have been dealing with this. And it has been a real strain on owners right now. Our recent survey with owners showing that 34% of rental property owners are looking to sell their properties in the next two years, which is a huge staggering number right now. There's a huge disconnect between wanting housing and really preventing people from actually providing housing, and people wanting to get out of housing. And people and renters say, well, what's the big deal? Who cares if they sell? Well, if you've got an owner, a legacy owner, that's owned a property for over 10 years, they've got low property taxes, low mortgage, maybe it's, be paid off, and they can offer below-market-rate housing. As soon as they sell that property because they're out, it's become too hard. They can't, I can echo some of the, the costs have gone up tremendously for rental housing providers. As soon as they sell, the economics of that property change dramatically. Now the new owner has high property taxes, high costs. They've got to kick out those renters, they've got to raise the rents to survive, and that's what you're looking at. If you keep pounding owners like this, we have to incentivize people to want to provide housing. If you make it difficult, and you make it so you can't enforce your lease because no matter what they do, you can't get them out. 80%, 90% of evictions are just because people, for non-payment of rent. What do you expect owners to do if someone's not paying their rent? One of the owners talked about, we're subsidizing people when we do this. It's not fair to ask people that run a business to subsidize people, their customers that they're providing a service to. We've got one of our councilmembers that I think you said you own property and you're going to, you're cruising yourself. He should be the person leading this because he knows what you're talking about. If you don't provide rental housing, how can you pass legislation against something you know nothing about? This is a really complicated issue. We've been through this with other cities before, and it's really damaging to the community. I mean, to have to, next thing you're going to have people that are going to be, owners are going to have to cut costs on everything. And then you're going to have habitability claims and complaints about that because owners can't heat their properties up. They've got to decide, what do I pay the mortgage? And this, what do I fix this person's bathroom or the light in this? They have to make those choices, and it's becoming impossible to make those choices. So I want you to think about this. This is a really important issue that really impacts housing. We need to incentivize housing providers, not take a hammer and, and beat them across with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Greg B. And after that is Hannah S. Greg? Greg?
Hi, I'm Greg Brazil. Just for the heck of it, I moved into town in 1948, and it's still a family home that I rent and have for several years. In 1980, I became a homeowner here, and now I rent that house as I move to another house in Albany. I think you people are trying to legislate away a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, I have checked the records, there's basically no, no record of all these problems that you're got on this thing. As far as rent control is concerned, if I have a vacancy and I, I advertise my unit for whatever money and there's no takers, I have to lower it. That's rent control automatically. You don't have to legislate it. So don't, don't legislate something that's not needed. I could go on, but that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Hannah? After Hannah is Elaine S.
Hi, my name is Hannah Strange. I've been an Albany resident since 2019, and I am a renter. I didn't come here expecting to speak today, but I feel like there's just a misbalanced representation today, so I wanted to come up and share my experience as a renter. Moved here in 2019 to rent a two-bedroom, 1,000-square-foot house. Moved up from Oakland, where I've been for 20 years, with a rent control of around 2% increase. We got in at $2,800, which felt amazing because that was big enough for our family of four, two incomes, two young kids. And each year had around a 4% increase until in 2025, we were around $3,400. And our landlord phoned us and said, I have to sell the house. I have some medical bills I have to take care of. And gave us a chance to make a bid on it. But when houses that are 1,000 square feet sell for almost $1 million, which is what it went for to a young couple in tech companies, a family like mine, where my husband's a carpenter, he has fixed probably or built ADUs for a lot of the folks who are probably here today. He's worked in, in Albany for 20 years. I work at a labor union, we have two salaries, two kids, one with special needs. And we were hard-pressed in the 60 days that you have as a renter when you're being kicked out of your home to find anywhere that was under $5,000 to rent that had a minimum of two bedrooms in Albany. That was earlier this year. It was like a crisis for six months in our family, like, where are we going to live? We don't have the money to buy in a climate like this, and we certainly didn't have the money to rent. The only way we've ended up in a rental is because my husband worked for a woman who decided she could move to a retirement home and rent out the house to us, and she trusted him as a tenant who would take care of the property. And we actually are, in addition to paying rent, also managing the property so that we can get an affordable rate to live. And that's, we're a lucky family, and we have a lot of resources available to us, and I can't imagine that that's the kind of city that you all want to be building, where it's that hard for a family with the amount of resources and privileges that mine has to find a home to live here and to still be part of this community. I feel like it's going to become like Millionaire Village by the Bay pretty soon if nothing's done to protect renters. So I really support the rent caps and rent control. I can't remember what the term is, but I, I support that, and I support more protection for renters in single-family units because I know that's a very different landscape than in apartment buildings. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
After Elaine is Chris M.
Hi, good evening. This is called a study session, but one of the things we didn't get really is any data. We didn't get any data whatsoever at the hack, except for we did get a small amount of data on evictions. We have about a handful of evictions every year. While I understand those are not desirable, there was recently a case in Albany Village that thankfully the mayor brought to everybody's attention where somebody was spraying red spray paint all over Albany Village with hateful messages on it. So imagine having a tenant, imagine that being your tenant that is spraying red spray paint, hateful graffiti everywhere where children can see it, and possibly not having the option to remove that person from the community. So I am a preschool teacher, and I do understand the need to protect young children from seeing vile, hateful information. So there are circumstances, however unfortunate, when we might need to remove somebody. And yes, sometimes there have to be consequences. Otherwise, we are going to have some really bad actors that are going to have, they're going to be repeat offenders. So I'm just pointing to the fact that Albany itself has very, very, very few evictions, and there really is no need to strengthen that type of protection in Albany. And that data was given to us by the hack, and that data is available to you. With regard to the rest of the things that were being discussed at the hack, it was mostly ideas. Well, they're doing this in Los Angeles, or they're doing this in San Leandro. Let's try it out here in Albany. I don't know that it's a good idea to make Albany a test tube. I just don't think so. I think we need to put some thought into this. We have, for the most part, some very good property owners. There are always going to be a few bad apples. I'm very sorry about that, but there are always going to be some. We do our very best to self-police. If I hear of somebody doing something inappropriate, believe me, I'm going to be the first one breathing down their throat. Take good care, guys, and think it over.
Thank you for your comment.
After Chris is Robert Zee. After Chris is Robert C.
Hello, Chris Moore with the East Bay Rental Housing Association. I'm a housing provider in Oakland. I actually rent a storage location here in Albany from a multifamily owner here. You know, I think when we talk about rent control and we, and just cause, there's typically, it's very emotional-based, and we can hear that in some of the comments. And there's never a study as to how does this truly help the communities that it's been implemented. There's lots of economic studies. There's not one economic study out there that says rent control helps to lower the rents for the next person moving in. So the people in place, yes, they can hold their rents down, but it tends to stop development of new housing. And when you have stoppage and less supply, you have increased rents, and you see that, you see that in Oakland, I see that in Berkeley, you see that pretty much anywhere where there is, where there is rent control. I think when we talk about just cause, 95% of evictions in Alameda County are for a just cause, okay? Now, why is that? It's because those, it's because people can't pay their rent. They have a health bill, they have a car payment that they have to make. And the way you solve that is not by creating a whole program. You, that's, that's, that doesn't really help overall because you can also look at the stats of what happens. Once people go to eviction court, they're, they're never, rarely evicted 1% of the time, but there's a payment made to them and they lose their housing. A much cleaner and effective way is called Emergency Rental Assistant Program, and the county's talking about that right now under Measure W. And you go through a process where the housing provider can quickly see if somebody's having trouble paying the rent that much, that month, and they can work with the county or work with the city to get Emergency Rental Assistant to help them get through those tough times. It's the most, the cleanest, the most effective way to do it. Otherwise, you do, and you can look at the, look at, and I'd be, Chris Moore, I'd be happy to provide the data. You can see the people, and this has happened to me, they, they get into a situation where they get so far behind on rent that they end up just moving out and moving somewhere else. I think on the CPI question, if you want your housing stock to start looking, it's a beautiful city. As you, as you limit CPI, you obviously don't leave, and you heard about the increases here, you don't leave enough funds to help people maintain their properties, and you have a lower, lower stock. So it's, it doesn't work well for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
After Robert is Deborah C.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Chastain. I'm here on behalf of two of my clients, Bernie and Lois, who own a property in Albany, would be unfairly treated by this, and they've asked me to come and ask you not to go forward with the proposals. Their, this situation's a little bit different from many. They built a retirement plan around the property that they own. This is their sole source of income, and they are very, very generous with their tenants. So if you can imagine this, in Albany, there are 26 units, with the exception of two that are vacant at the moment, they're all rented. The lowest rent they charge is $600 for a woman who's been there for 40 years on a fixed income, and they haven't raised the rent in ages despite the fact that they know that they will be penalized for this if rent control becomes fixed in Albany in a way as, has been talked about. They have, of the units that they have, 12 of them are $1,000 or less. I don't know if you have looked at units in Albany, but you can't find one-bedroom apartments for $1,000 or less. Most expensive they charge anybody is a very large generous two-bedroom, and that's $2,000, and that's only because it's a new tenant and only because they're fearful of rent control. You punish people who are doing the right thing in many ways when this happens. And we just say that times have gotten worse for them. They just had to spend $125,000 to replace all the windows on the west side of their building and to replace all the stucco, and they have other windows that need to be replaced, but we're trying to stage this because they don't get enough money. They just lost their fire insurance because the fire inspector suggested that they get all special fire-rated doors throughout the 26 units. They have to figure out, well, our doors have been fine for the last 60 years. Should we replace them all? Do we pass that along to the tenants? So on. So I'm not here to say that it's not a good thing to protect tenants. I represent two people that have been doing that for the last 50 years, and the tenants stay with them. People have been there 20, 30, 40 years. A new tenant will stay five or six or seven years and still be considered a new tenant. So you ought to consider that rent control can hurt people and who are trying to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
After Deborah would be Margie.
Hi, I'm Deborah Coffin. Thank you. I haven't had a chance to read what's being proposed, but it terrifies me. I have a 900-something-square-foot house in Albany that I've lived in for, since '97, and it's periodically been a rental because sometimes I go and hang out on the East Coast for a while and then come back. I am terrified of the idea that I could lose my home long-term if I decided to join the Peace Corps for two years, or if I decided to rent for a while and then wanted to come back. I rent out my place during the summers when I'm away, and I'm terrified of the 30-day rule that I've been reading about in other places where a person who's a housemate becomes an entitled renter, and you can't get rid of the person. I've heard of seniors who have that kind of thing happen, and they are forced to leave their own home. I have a friend who lost her home because of her housemates, who apparently she didn't follow every single rule she was supposed to, and they took her house from her. She hasn't owned a house with her three children now for, gosh, 15 years. She lost her house about 15 years ago. So her kids have been having to live in rentals, and her, she's a single mom, and she lost her house because of it. So I'm terrified of what rent control would do to me if I don't know enough to be a single-family homeowner and renter. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you for your comment.
After Margie is Kirk S.
Good evening, Council. My name is Margie Marks. I just want to remind you all again that Albany is over 50% renters. Of those renters, more than 50% are cost-burdened. Renters of color are particularly at risk. Over 70% of African-Americans who rent in Albany are cost-burdened. To be cost-burdened means you are spending more on housing than is sustainable in the long run. I don't want you to take lack of tenants speaking here tonight to mean they are perfectly satisfied. Albany, as several people have said, is a small city. Tenants are elected to come forward. The tenants are in the process of forming a tenants' union and hope to be able to be in place in the coming year. That endeavor, by the way, is led by young people in our schools because they want to help their families stay here. Being a landlord is a business. With a business comes regulations, upkeep, taxes. I realize there are always unexpected expenses. There is a provision in the recommendations from the five-page report about what happened at the hack that was attached to the agenda tonight. So, that talk about making allowances if there's some unexpected expects. I realize there might be, but you know you're going to have taxes, you know you're going to have upkeep, you know you're going to have all of these things. So you could, you could, when you set the initial rent, you could set it for that. The biggest benefit a landlord has is that they own property and are building wealth. As a homeowner in Albany myself, I know how much wealth my family has built with our one house. Renters have no such advantage. I would ask the city, give them some security. Retro stabilization is not a punishment for landlords. It's not. I do believe most of the landlords in Albany are great. I talk to a lot of tenants, and I hear, I hear a lot of stories, but most of them are good landlords. I would say that. But tenants need security. Families in Albany need to know that they can be secure in their place here. We're not asking anyone, you set the rent at whatever you want. Nobody's telling you. You can't set it at a certain rate. I know the market helps you set it, but when you say you're punished and you're helping subsidize these people, I don't see how you are because you, you're the one that sets the rent. I would just ask you to please be cognizant that the majority of people in this city are renters, and most of them are families in our schools. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
After Kirk is Francesco.
Hi, I'm Kirk Schumacher. I don't know how many people in this room have been around this planet since before 1972, but that's when I first became a rental property, rental housing provider in the city of Albany. So I've got a little over 53 years now of providing rental housing to people in Albany. I've never evicted anyone over the course of that time. And I find it a little troubling that a bunch of people who are not rental housing providers are going to decide about the business that is run by people who are housing providers. And as one of the previous speakers said, her house was sold by somebody who couldn't afford for one reason or another to continue being a landlord. And that's the risk that you run if you put too many more burdens on people who are providing rental housing in this community. It's easy enough for somebody who's particularly renting a single-family house that they probably formerly lived in to somebody else. They can say, you know, I can sell this house for $1 million, $1,500, whatever the number is, and then I don't have to worry about all of these things. I don't have to worry about these regulations. I don't have to maybe get called into a mediation about whether the amount of rent that I increase is appropriate or not. Somebody spoke earlier about the increase in insurance rates. My insurance company said, we're not going to renew your policy. I asked my insurance broker what the reason for that was. Insurance company came back and said catastrophic risk. I don't know what the catastrophic risk is for a property here in Albany, but that was their excuse. I had to go with a non-admitted insurance company, and I'm sure the housing committee can tell you what that means, but the rent or the insurance premium was increased by $70 per month per tenant for the new policy. Now, somebody spoke about how the current available increase would be 6% this year. For my tenant who pays $1,100 a month, that $70 a month of increase would be more than what would be allowed in the way of a rental increase under a 6% cap. So the increase in costs that rental housing providers are facing are pretty serious. Nobody here is telling the electrician, or the plumber, or the roofer, or the painter that they can't increase their rates more than 3% or 5% or whatever per month. But that's what we are paying as rental housing providers. I think that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. When I bought my house in Albany 35 years ago, I got the right to live there and make a home as I wanted it, but the responsibility fell to me to pay the mortgage, the taxes, and insurance, and to maintain the place. But I always had a right to rent that property to whomever I wanted to rent it under the terms that that person could freely agree to pay and the terms under to do that. What this whole thing, study session, is about is taking away my rights and the rights of all the housing providers here and suddenly transferring those rights to anonymous people, some may be deserving, some not, but first of all, they didn't spend 35 years paying taxes and insurance and maintenance on the place. As a matter of fact, one of your programs is just to, they get the rights, they don't have to live here a year, and suddenly they get all of these rights. Now, why are we going through all this? Because the housing costs are just too darn high here. Yes, it's true, but why is that? It's caused by one overriding factor, a shortage of supply. Well, why do we have a shortage of supply? It's because of individual cities, like the city of Albany and the other cities, have governmental regulations, and our nimbyism limited the production of supply over the last 30 years. I witnessed it here in this chamber over decades. It's just changed recently. So there's another reason, which is there is a lack of regional planning as well. Region didn't come up with the plan. But if that's the cause of the high prices, why are we blaming the housing providers and placing the burden of them to provide a cure for a housing shortage that was not created by them? They created the supply. They're maintaining the supply. This kind of psychology only for rent control comes because there has been an overriding effort to demonize the property owner as the rent gouger. Have we all heard that term? Oh, they raised the rents, they're gouging me. Well, it's the shortage of supply caused by cities, government, and nimby's that have created that. Please study that solution that way, not by placing the burden on those who actually provide the housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I read through the staff report before I came here, and I'm not opposed to all of those things that are in that report. I think they're good ideas. The problem is, they're already addressed in state law, so why reinvent the wheel? What I think is happening here, as was said earlier, we're looking for, we have a solution and looking, it's looking for a problem. I don't think that problem exists here in Albany. It may have a few isolated cases, but certainly not in enough cases to warrant the, putting into place further regulations that are just intensification of what's already in place. We do have a shortage of property here in Albany. The state senator, Mr. Aragon, is going to be here later this evening, I understand. Ask him how they dealt with the supply problem in Berkeley. As you probably know, Berkeley has built hundreds, if not thousands, of units over the past few years, and they, I think they dealt with their housing problem quite a bit in Berkeley, in spite of rent control. Rent control is there, but it, it's, the rent control is hurting those who have the existing properties because they can't, they can't cover their costs, the increased costs. We all, as a property provider, we, as a rental provider, we all experience increased costs every year. I just spent $100,000 on my four-unit property to comply with the city's soft story ordinance. I'm not opposed to that ordinance. I think it's a good idea, but the fact of the matter is, I spent $100,000 on that. Never going to recover that. Anyway, I urge you to think long and hard about what you're doing here. Think about if we really do have a problem and what that problem really is. I think the solution that is being presented is looking for a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sir, you've already spoken. I'm sorry. You've already had your comment. You've already had your comment.
Did I add to that, though?
No, not at this time. I'm sorry.
Well, that's a bunch of crap.
Just vote for us, public media.
Please behave, sir.
Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Karen Shonoy, and I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Bridge Association of Realtors. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We represent real estate professionals who deeply value sound, fiscally responsible housing policy in the communities we serve. I want to begin by noting how similar Albany is to the city of San Pablo, another small city with limited staff capacity, modest general fund resources, and a rental housing stock made up largely of small, older multifamily buildings. When San Pablo began discussing whether to move toward rent stabilization and stricter just cause, their city council commissioned a detailed, independent fiscal analysis before taking any next steps. That analysis showed the true scale of what a rent program requires: multiple full-time staff, a new administrative structure, and well over $1 million annually in ongoing costs. I sent the details of that study over to you earlier today. Albany has not yet undertaken a comparable level of analysis. Your own staff report also makes clear that the Housing Advisory Commission did not identify a renter-owner crisis. Much of the conversation centered on community, values, and education, not on failures of the existing state framework. And the reality is that California already provides robust protections under AB 1482 and SB 567. It caps rent increases, it requires just cause eviction, and prohibits harassment and retaliation. There is nothing that indicates that that sunset date of 2030 will not be extended five years from now on those same protections. Nothing indicating that. A local rent program would provide only modest additional benefit beyond state law, yet would require a major financial commitment and an ongoing administrative capacity that Albany does not currently have. It would also risk discouraging housing production and reinvestment at the exact moment the city must meet significant housing element obligations. As an organization committed to responsible housing policy, we urge the city not to rush into drafting a rent stabilization ordinance or implementing further rental restrictions. At a minimum, Albany should first conduct the same level of fiscal and administrative analysis that other similarly sized cities have relied on. We believe a more balanced approach, education, and stronger habitability enforcement will better serve residents without creating an unsustainable new program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Saya Farakthala, and I just have a few brief comments after looking at the agenda items. I, like Peter, also agree that most of this is state law. There are a couple of items, though, that caught my eye: limiting rent increases to once a year. I believe that's all you can do. And so I'm not sure why we would continue to talk about that item. And then prohibiting rent increases in the first year of tenancy. Well, you can't increase the rent during the first year of tenancy to begin with. It's only on the 13th month. Overall, I encouraged the city council to review the survey that was given to us and the First Housing Advisory Commission. And it was done for the city of Albany, done by people who rented in Albany. And overall, it was an 80%, I believe it was 80% satisfaction. There was one dip in one area, and I apologize, I don't recall what that dip was. However, overall, I felt like we were a model city, and I wasn't quite sure what we were going to have to talk about that evening, because it was such an excellent survey. I was very proud of us as housing providers. In regards to the means testing that might be reviewed, and I hope that it's reviewed again in January, I think, I think that's where you can create the most opportunity for displaced or homeless families in helping this crisis and helping rehome and rehouse people or people who are struggling and perhaps curtailing the opportunists that are out there. Because we certainly meet those guys often, the bad actors. That cost of means testing versus the legal aid that has been proposed, I think, would be an interesting conversation to actually study. What would be more valuable and what would be more helpful and productive in our community? I think that sunsetting the, eliminating the sunset, I think that would be bad governance. And the only reason why I say that is review is a much more productive way of handling performance and using the data and taking a look at it. But sunsetting it and making things permanent, that creates another layer of bureaucracy. And then, oh, we're going to put some other rule on this because, well, this section wasn't working and this group of people is unhappy. So let's just, I don't think we should even approach that. I think the CPI and limiting the increases, it's all relative. You know, when you can't find enough income to pay for your car, or to pay for the insurance, or to pay your mortgage, you have to drum up some source of income, right? And when we get nailed by PG&E and nailed by EBOD and we get nailed by all these outstanding costs like Soft Story, we have to have a way to be able to pay our mortgages. And as housing providers, we take a look at the numbers, and not to be callous, but that's...
Thank you for your comment.
Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, hi. Yeah, my name's Amy Smolins. First, I'll point out, as few others have, that attachment to this item indicates there's no identified problem between renters and property owners. So it seems like this is sort of a solution in search of a problem. I live on a 900 block of Canes where there's many apartments, and a large percentage of my neighbors are renters, they're families with kids, retirees, young couples, all kinds of people. Most of the landlords are like those who have spoken up in tonight's meeting. They're small business owners trying to make a living and providing housing in Albany. We had National Night Out in August, which I'm sure you all enjoyed. I emailed invitations to the landlords, and they forwarded the invitations to their tenants. And we had a really amazing turnout of owners and renters, everyone all together on our block at Community Potluck. Property owners are our neighbors, as are the renters and other homeowners. We're all neighbors together, and this reflected that. Also, I can speak as a self-employed person who doesn't have an employer to pay for my pension, pay for insurance, and all our other expenses. These property owners are the same as me and the same as other small business owners, those who own a restaurant, a cafe, any little shop, just people trying to make a living. Some of them spoke to you tonight. They're just people like you and me. There's nobody, there's nothing different. So let's not separate it. We shouldn't just try to cause this division. The state regulations of 5% and the cost of living areas increase are fair for everybody. If Albany wants more affordable housing, we need to do one thing, and you know what that is? It's build more housing. What happened to the large multi-unit housing at the former Albany Bowl site? We need that to be built. We need to build more housing on San Pablo Avenue corridor, like El Cerrito and Berkeley are doing on both sides of us, and on Solano Avenue, like the housing over Safeway, which our city rejected years ago. Build more housing. That's how we get more affordable rental housing in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi. Hi, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to address all of you. My name is Reza Seraphinajad. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, who are 86 and 92, respectively. They bought a four-unit complex in Albany back in the mid-'70s. And yeah, that's, that's their entire income. That's, that's what they rely on in old age. As you know, the cost of, you know, fortunately, they are not at the point yet, but when we look around, if they needed assistance care, it'd be like on the order of $10,000 per month, something along those lines. I would ask of you to see what potentially could be done to kind of help our elderly, because those kinds of costs are the things that are truly going to bankrupt so many people when you think about it. But I wanted to give you something to think about. You know, I really worry a lot in this country with divisiveness and where we kind of stand as a country. And I feel like there are already a lot of tenant protections that are out there, and that's a good thing, for sure. What is already out there by the state, it's, it's very good. It's in place to help protect a lot of the, you know, a lot of renters who are in need of not being gouged or anything like that. My parents have been very fortunate to always have outstanding relationships with their tenants. And if ever there was a time when they needed a reduction, I mean, my parents even went so far as to actually reduce rents at one point in time for their tenants back when they were younger. But my, my point is just that, the idea of basically, it feels to me like property owners, and I think I share this opinion with a lot of the other property owners, even though I don't own property, I'm just speaking on behalf of my parents, that it's, it's another issue that is set to divide us and to make it a contentious thing, when really, I mean, you have rent review, you have all kinds of things on the local level that are there to help assist tenants. And I think that's all the good thing, but I think additional attempts to squeeze, it just makes it so much more difficult. The cost of insurance continues to skyrocket. You know, if we want to have a new roof put on, it's exorbitantly expensive. And I wanted to also give you one other thing to think about. I happen to live in Berkeley with my family. We live in a, in a rent-controlled building, four, four units. We pay ridic, very little because it's rent control, and we would love to move, but...
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lee. I'm a property owner in Albany. I think what I would advise the council is, before taking on any of this, to echo what someone else said, is to really understand the fiscal responsibility that the city is, would be taking this on, and whether or not the city can actually afford to do this, to maintain this kind of a program. When the problem does not even exist from all accounts, there has been no hard evidence presented that there is contention between renters that this is a big problem. Rather, I think we should rely on the state programs and the state laws to educate both renters and property owners about what they need to do. And also, I would rather see that the Housing Advisory Commission come up with more creative solutions to address renters' issues and needs without pitting renters and housing providers against each other. So why can't we be a model in terms of a city to try to create creative solutions rather than, rather than solutions that doesn't seem to work in much larger city and taking on this owner's task? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that concludes our public comment portion for this item. I will bring it back to council for any further discussion at this time.
Mayor, if I may. One, I wanted to thank the Housing Committee, Housing Advisor Committee for the work that they put into this, and staff for bringing this forward. And I want to emphasize both to those who are in the room and those online that this is just one step of many steps. And so, comments were made about work that was done in San Pablo, and I believe that that, very appreciative of receiving that report, I will review it. But what I want to emphasize to the city of Albany is that our staff could not have done that without first council having understood what policies to explore and what costs might be. And so for those who are saying, we can't decide anything on without a report similar to that, I would say, yes, that's true. However, we also are very early in the process, and we could not have asked staff to actually run that report without first having had a discussion for staff to then explore what it might cost to implement such policy. So I did want to clarify that. One thing that I would ask of city attorney, just to clarify, there was comment about ADUs. And on a broad, high level of these three topics, anti-harassment, nondiscretion, sorry, just cause, and rent stabilization policies, which of these three would apply to ADUs? Could potentially apply to ADUs? Or, for instance, maybe I'll put it a little bit better. My understanding is that rent stabilization would not apply to ADUs because they were built after the deadline for Costa-Costa. So, sorry, Costa-Hawkins, I just got that name wrong. I just want to call it Contra-Costa, says that only buildings older than a certain age, the supplies do. So I just want to check, does rent stabilization, would that potentially apply to ADUs?
Are you talking about, council member, the existing state law, or are you talking about what could be potentially proposed?
Sorry, existing state law. So I assume we are not proposing to change state law, just our laws. And I thought there was an understanding also that you could not apply rent control, you could only apply rent control to things that state law allowed you to apply rent control to. Is that a correct understanding?
You can go stricter. We haven't gone into the full details of all of the applicability, but I think some of the questions that you had proposed...
Costa-Hawkins, sorry, I was going to get that one wrong, simply sets the baseline. A community can choose to be more restrictive than the state law?
May I answer this? So Costa-Hawkins, we cannot supersede Costa-Hawkins, but AB 1483 was based on the limitations of Costa-Hawkins. But, so, for instance, the, the, there are certain things that we can change in terms of just cause for eviction that can be expanded to unit types over and above what the state law says, but we cannot violate Costa-Hawkins in terms of rent stabilization. So yes, we can go over and above for some things.
But what I'm hearing is, for those who are concerned that they have built an ADU, if I'm reading, understanding what you're saying, which was my previous understanding, is that we cannot apply rent stabilization, just that one, like the topic of how much you can increase rent to an ADU?
That is my understanding as well, because I do believe it's covered by Costa-Hawkins.
I want to clarify that to the general public, that Costa-Hawkins really says any new construction, rent control, or rent stabilization, as we're describing it here, today does not apply. Now, if state law could change, but my understanding is it does not apply. However, things like just cause or anti-discretionation laws could apply. Okay, perfect. Because I think that's a really helpful thing to help make sure everyone's on the same page as we're having these conversations. The vast majority of the conversation today that I have heard appear to be mostly about the rent stabilization portion. There are two other very important policies that we're talking about. I had one other question for staff and/or city attorney. In the same vein of the ADU portion, these policies, do they or do they not apply to UC Village renters?
They do not. Any local ordinance would not apply to UC Village.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I raise that, not to say that I do not feel for UC renters, I was, my family and I were UC Village renters at one point. But understand that, that we cannot, do not have a say on what UC does, at least not directly. And that also, the other thing that I want to throw out there is, again, a number is often thrown out that 50 or 51% of Albany households are renters. That is accurate, but only half of those households can we affect any policy changes on. There are about 1,740-ish, 50 units in Village, which is about half of the rental households in Albany. So that's not to say that what we're doing isn't important. It is absolutely important. And to me, what it means is, by implementing things or potentially considering implementation of things, we make it easier for that transition for renters in the UC Village if they find a rental property in Albany. Perhaps they can also become owners, but, so I just want to, I think one of the things that I have heard just before I even decided to run for office was this conversation about renters versus owners, rent stabilization, just cause, as property owners who rent, as landlords. You know, the new term is housing providers, but I am a landlord. You know, I'd like us to be talking a little more concrete in terms of numbers, like be more specific when we talk about things. And to, I mean, I will follow up with staff later, just about what I'd love to see in New Year, when something comes to us. But I did want to get that out before we jumped into too much discussion, because I have other things to talk about. But I really wanted to just get that information out there about application of rent stabilization to new construction. out there about application of rent stabilization to new construction, and applicability of these policies to UC Village.
Thank you, Councilmember Mickey. And I think, yes, I had echoed similar calls for, in terms of feedback, for additional data studies. I know, we've heard that several times from public comments, but I think having a baseline to work with definitely helps inform us. And I know that's not where we're at right now in today's study session. This is more or less for us to hear what the temperature is right now, and provide city staff feedback on how we feel things should move forward at this time. So again, thank you, Councilmember Mickey. Any additional comments from council at this time?
I might quibble with the numbers a little bit. I think about a third of the rental residences in Albany are in University Village, not, not half. About 7,000 residences in Albany in total, and 3,500 are rented. So, as I said during the, the housing element consideration, I'm not particularly keen on rent stabilization. I think we all did this to ourselves in terms of the current housing crisis. I was much more interested in providing emergency rent support, and I appreciate that Mr. Moore brought that up. I would welcome a conversation with you about how we can fund that. I put forward a, an idea to do that. It did not meet with the welcome of majority voters in the city, so I'm not sure how we fund that. Rental provider community, not necessarily everybody in this room, spent more money against that measure than had ever been spent on a campaign in Albany's history. It was $80,000, and that doesn't count the funds that were spent that were not reported. So how do we fund that? I think that is the right solution, to step in and be able to provide people that support when they get in trouble. And I appreciate that, that Karen Shinoye, the Bridge Association Realtors Government Affairs Director, in his letter to the council, said that in his section, "More practical, lower-cost approaches are available," specifically listed habability standards inspection. So that is something I was interested in, and that would have been funded by that measure. And I'm fascinated that, that he included that as something that was of interest to the association, because I'm pretty sure that the rental provider community opposed that aspect of Measure R as well. But I am still interested in that. For staff, one of the items in the Program 5D of the housing element that was listed was assisting with legal representation for tenants upon eviction. There's a number of studies that show that the tenants have representation less than 10% of the time, whereas housing providers have representation more than 80% of the time. There's massive asymmetry there, because it's a civil proceeding and not a criminal proceeding. I didn't see anything about that in the report. I don't know, it's like the, the Housing Advisory Commission had a meeting regarding that, so I'm curious what the outcome of that was, and interested in having that proceed to pace. And I think I will leave it there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jordan. Anything else from the dice at this time?
I guess my question, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you that came to the, to the meeting, and all those of you, and I always look at the screen, but all those of you that are at home and participated, we appreciate hearing from you. And my question to staff, what, what do you need from us tonight to come, to help you come back to us with something?
So we will be compiling everything we heard, and the data we've already collected, as well as, as I mentioned, some of the peer studies we've done. So I've heard a few ideas of, to make sure to include. So if you have anything that hasn't been mentioned that you would really like to see, I would love to hear that.
Well, I think one thing, it's, it's a bit to the side, but is the whole issue of the business licenses and the businesses, and probably more than, well, it's probably mainly property owners, but it could be other businesses in town, that don't have business licenses. And I'm also somewhat interested, I guess fairly interested, in the idea of a rent registry. And at this point, understanding what, what the burden on staff and the financial burden would be. I know the City of El Cerrito has one that's linked to their business license. So to my simple mind, it wouldn't be terribly hard. It's part of a form, but never quite works that way. Those are two things that I'd be interested in hearing more about. Thank you.
I'd ask the Vice Mayor, so what does a rent registry provide? What does the data provide?
What units are actually being rented, and what the rate of rent is, so you can look and see what the elevate, if it's elevating, or what's happening with it. Just gives you a better picture. Like, we don't really have good data, I don't think, on this.
So the American Community Survey of the U.S. Census generates statistics on rent, cost of rent in Albany for one, two, three bedroom?
I think this would give you each unit, or each-
It would give you each unit, but if you're, if you're looking for statistics, those are already available and generated and free to Albany. So I just don't know, I don't know what, having data on each specific unit, what value add that gets us for the effort.
We don't know what the effort is. And it, it could be that if you're seeing certain ones being elevated, and others are staying the same, that's sort of a trend that, hmm, what's going on here?
Yeah, I would echo Vice Mayor McQuaid's request, just, you know, more data. More data doesn't always help. But I think in this situation, more data would be helpful. And one of the concerns I always have with the American Community Surveys is, it is a survey, and it, you know, there's a level of discrepancy. Also, you know, how frequently is it being updated? Like, there are all kinds of questions. And I would prefer to be able to base it, if we can, on something that other communities in our region have already done. So really understanding what rents are. But I think, my question back to staff, generally on all these things, and I don't know if this is something that would happen in the spring, or if it's really something following the report back we get from spring, but it's really starting to understand cost implications of what this means. If we were to implement this policy, you know, is that one and a half staff member's time, you know, or, you know, I think one of the things that I've been interested in, is that we are not the only community dealing with this, right? Essentially, every community in California has to be asking this question. Not every community is going to land in a place where they pass rent stabilization, they assume, or not. But for some, one, or for any of these programs, some of it may be the cost for staff. And so, I know, one of the questions I have asked other jurisdictions in the East Bay is, how are you guys approaching this? Because there are many small communities in, in Costa-Costa County, and Alameda County. And, you know, I would love from staff to understand if this is something that, that, what it would cost to keep this in-house? Is there even an estimate of what it might cost to outsource this, right? Are there people who are doing this for multiple communities? And I will also leave it to the discretion of staff to say, when this comes back to us. It's too early for us to estimate this, right? But that you know that it's on our radar, it's like, we have to have a sense of what fiscal impact of these policies might be. That was one of the things I noted in the staff report, is there's no, you know, we, we talk about the social equity and inclusion considerations, and oftentimes you all are providing us with other impacts. That's not one that's there. I get that it's a study session, so we're not really there yet, and we don't have costs. But I think that is something to consider, because while I, I would, I really want to dig into the San Pablo example to understand why, why the cost was so high. It may not be an apples-to-apples comparison, but I think that's one of my, my bigger thoughts behind this.
Thank you. Did you have anything else further to add, Vice Mayor McQuaid? I don't know if we accidentally cut you off there.
I'm good. I thought I'd jump in here just a little bit. First of all, I, I really want to thank everybody who did come tonight. And this is really important, that we get the engagement, that we get the community feedback, that, you know, and I'm honored to have a really great housing provider who has kept me very stable in Albany. So I am a renter, not, although I am a real estate agent. But it's really important to note that a lot of our property providers are, are older, and have been doing this a long time. And I also want to encourage us to pay attention to the fact that, just because we're hearing stuff on this level and everything, as, as was stated before, the state laws are constantly changing. They're constantly bringing in new ideas, new thoughts. So I don't, I caution us to not to technically invent a wheel that we don't need to invent if it's already being invented on some purposes as well. There are a lot of protections, but I, I think that everybody should have equal protections of things. And that is something that I've heard time and time again, is just, I think, I think a lot of the people that I've spoken to, everybody's willing to share in, in some support of things. But they want it to be equal. They want it to be everybody taken into account, not just pitting people from one side to the other, because that's really not fair. And there's always going to be special circumstances, there's always going to be one-offs. And those are things that I think that we can work with more on a case-by-case basis, and not blanket, blanketing something that doesn't necessarily need to go that, to that extent. So I just want to caution that as well. I think everybody here, here would like to see everybody work together and communicate more, and understand what things are, because there's a lot of terminology getting tossed around, or a lot of like, oh, well, did you know that this is that? Oh, oh, well, I heard that that does that. Well, we're not bringing enough facts to the table. And also, I just want to clarify, because I think when we started out with this meeting, you had mentioned 10%, and as being the state cap. And I don't believe that that's the correct number. I believe it's a 5%.
Plus CPI, up to a max of 10%.
Oh, okay, up to. So, and CPI, over the past five years, I don't think has, has gone past maybe even 6% from what I remember, what I recall. I could be wrong. But just want to caution that tale of just everybody, I would like to see everybody get on the same page, get the same amount of knowledge and understanding and grace for each other, and work together as a community to solve whatever our issues are. And not just, you know, I always talk about the carrot, not the stick. So, thank you all.
Mayor, if I could just add one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I think to jump, sort of jump on what Jennifer said, one of the things I think we need to do a better job as, as a city, is to, and probably as property owners also, is to be sure that everyone has the same information, but everyone gets the information. So when you rent a property, you understand what your rights and what your responsibilities are. When you buy a property, you understand what they are. So again, it's a balance. But we want to be sure that everyone is getting the right information, and the same information, that they're getting information. That seems to be a, a lack sometimes.
Appreciate that. Did you have a comment, Councilmember Jordan?
Yeah, I was just going to offer that, that I referenced the American Community Survey data, which is on a rolling five-year basis, because Albany's small, it's all small jurisdictions. And from 2015, which is the earliest data that is posted currently through 2020, again, a five-year rolling basis, median rent basically didn't increase in Albany. Maybe increased 2%, more, more than inflation, I should say, more than inflation. So if you index it to inflation, it basically didn't increase. And it has increased quite a bit since then. But nonetheless, I think taking it, in, taking into account the full context of that data is something I would encourage councilmembers to do, since it is free and available data when the conversation goes forward.
Thank you very much. With that said, I think I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, we do need to make sure we come to the table with equity in mind, and communication in mind, transparency in mind. I think wrenching towards that, we're doing a good job on that. I think it's also always important to remind ourselves never to make assumptions about what folks know and don't know. I think that happens often with me, when people look at me, and they may make assumptions about what, what I know and what I don't know. I know, I look rather young for a mayor, but when it comes to providing housing, that is something I am very well-versed in. My family has provided significant number of housing in Contra-Costa County. And I know there's similar struggles that they deal with over in Contra-Costa County, as they do in Alameda County. And one of those properties that I do have to help my family manage, and I do understand a significant amount around what it comes, when it concerns being stripped of our hazard insurance, and no explanation whatsoever. And I also understand it's on us, as elected leaders, to talk to our, our state representative about how to address those issues. I just want to make it abundantly clear that there also needs to be a certain level of mutual respect here, when we are talking about this and having these conversations, and not making negligent assumptions about anyone here at the dice, or anyone in the community. And with that said, I also do want to acknowledge, I want to thank everyone who has provided public comment this evening. I think your input is very valuable and insightful. And I do hear from the, I believe, three folks who were probably on the other side of the spectrum of supporting much of what was proposed as conversation starters, that we need to do a better job, too, of capturing the voice of, of other folks in this community as well. And so I know city staff is going to do a solid job at that. I'm not concerned about that. And I just want to make sure I get ahead of that, because I, I do hear that, from the handful of folks that did provide comments around that, about lack of representation in this public forum. But I want to stress and emphasize that I have the utmost confidence in our city staff to make sure that that is being captured really well. City staff has never failed us as a council during my tenure and leadership, and being able to account for the various and diverse voices in this community. With that said, I think city staff has all the feedback and information that you need at this point. What I'm going to do is join this portion of this meeting. We're going to take a quick five-minute break before we start our regular session. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are now back in session for our regular meeting. We're only 53 minutes late. I'll start off with our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Leechan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Mickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Here.
And Mayor Lopez?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. We will now move on to item number four, which I'm assuming this big lovely crowd is here for. Ceremonial matters for the Community Emergency Response Team CERT graduation. And I will be joining our fire chief up front as we're dispersing our certificates.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, City of Albany and CERT graduates. It's one of our fun and exciting times to talk about the dedication of our students from the fall, two different classes, our fall classes for the CERT training, and also acknowledge their efforts to help make the community a safer place, one person at a time, one neighborhood at a time, one block at a time. So I applaud them. Something special about this fall class was we had two different ones. One taught the traditional English, and then one, and we are the first city in all of California to do this, thanks to a Listos grant that was awarded to Albany CERT, Inc., our partners in community preparedness, specifically in CERT training. We taught the first class in Mandarin. So that was a feat for a small city like us. We were able to make it happen, and that comes from our teacher/trainer, and then the community members that came out to do that training. So it was an amazing outreach, and Albany did it first. So, pretty darn cool, I would say. And while as the fire chief, I definitely support and encourage and want to have as much CERT training as possible and community preparedness programs as possible to make us as resilient as we can be. Captain Smizer is the person who manages the program and really makes the things happen with coordinating with the Fire Department Resources and Albany CERT, Inc. So I'm going to introduce Captain Smizer and have him say a few words, and then we'll hand out the CERT upgrade.
Good evening, council. My name is Tim Smizer, captain with the City of Albany, and good evening to our CERT members. As Chief Puedo said, we want to thank you all. This is our biggest class we've had, super exciting. So these folks did eight weeks of training, and then they did a big final together where they reenacted a scenario, and you guys have all seen the videos. So we're very proud of them. They did a fantastic job. A couple of things, just so you kind of get the gravity of how big CERT is now, we're up to 316 CERT graduates in the City of Albany right now, so pretty cool. Our block captains are coming together, and we're training with them, and so we're very excited. And without further ado, Mayor, you ready? Let's do this. We're going to hand out some certificates, so. Okay, number, first is Fang?
Yeah.
Is Fang Wang? Our next one is Lucy Wu, and she had to leave early. She had to leave early. Next is LaRong Dao. Here. Oh, it's your mom's. It's her mom's, she's smiling. And if I say her name wrong, I do apologize. Next is Bo Wang. Maybe not here tonight, okay. Let's see, where are we at? Linda Liang? It's for his wife. All right. Next is Kristen Wong. Next is Dale Middlesworth. Matt Starat? Excuse me, Scott Starat, Scott. That is our class. Give a round of applause for our folks. And this is Susan Yaman, who is one of the instructors.
Short. I just want to quickly acknowledge our first-time instructors teaching the Mandarin class. So Chin Lei, where are you? Chin Lei with the little one on her lap there, Chin Lei? And supporting her and in the process of getting his teaching credential is CERT graduate Botan. Where are you, Bot? There he is. As you know, it's a lot of work behind the scenes, and especially the first-time teaching, and they did an amazing job, and their test scores were fabulous. So that's to their credit. Thank you.
And a big, big thanks to Susan, okay, to Susan Yaman and Blake Yaman and Bill Springer, who co-teached the class. They all do a fantastic job. And somehow, Aaron Samuels got missed. I apologize. Aaron? There's Aaron. If we can have all the CERT folks come to the front up here.
We're going to do the oath first.
Yeah. Do your oath on the first. Here's the back.
Thank you all for your volunteerism. So if you could, this is the oath of affirmation of allegiance, and if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me- And if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. You will sound as a Chinese student, then, please read with me. I, and please state your name.
I, do solemnly affirm
You solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Do you attest to the oath that you just took?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please lower your hands now. Congratulations.
Thank you again, and congratulations once more to our CERT graduates. Thank you for keeping us safe. I know we're always in good hands with the Sharks fan.
That's right. I know, I was like, why didn't he get a certificate? Did he fail the class?
All right. As the crowd is now clearing out, again, thank you, Chief Boydos, staff, and congratulations again. As the crowd is clearing out, we will now move on to item number five, which is City Manager's Report. And we will have our Assistant City Manager here this evening.
Yes. I do have a few items. So Winter Fields Refresh and Dock Park Closure. The Dock Park and Memorial Park and the Ball fields at both Memorial Park and Ocean View Parks are closed for their annual seasonal maintenance. These facilities will remain closed for approximately three months for treatment to allow the grass to grow and be healthy for the new season. Please enjoy our other parks as these spaces undergo a much-needed refresh. It's not too late to apply for the 2025 Parcel Tax Exemption and Renter Rebates. Eligible homeowners and renters in Albany can still submit their 2025 application anytime before December 31, 2025. You can visit our Parcel Tax Exemption and Renter Rebates webpage on the city website for more information, or call the Recreation and Community Services Department. We're continuing to prepare for storm season. It's very cold right now, but we don't have rain yet, but we are preparing for that. Residents can visit our city's storm webpage, albanyca.gov/stormresponse, for informational resources and in preparation for and during a storm. And sandbags are available during the rainy Caesar's, so a reminder that supplies for handbags are available free of charge with proof of Albany residency. Up to 10 sandbags can be obtained at the City of Albany Fire Department, and then the sand can be obtained at Ocean View Park parking lot, but please bring a shovel as there are none on site. And this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from Council at this time? Yes, Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Isabel, is there an option for people who can't shovel their own sand? Could staff do that for them?
Yes, they can contact the Fire Department or the Recreation Department.
Okay, thank you.
People will be able to assist.
Thank you very much. I'll probably be making special requests from that firefighter department.
Put you on a sandbox.
Do we have any other questions from Council at this time? Not seeing any. Any public comments for the City Manager's Report? Not seeing any. Close out this item. Thank you again. We'll now move on to item number six, Go to the City Public Comments. I'm unfortunately not seeing a single person here right now looking online.
Jean, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Thanks. Yeah, my name's Jean Wu. I'm a member of the ACAC, and I have been talking with folks both on the Albany Climate Action Committee and also coming to the City Council Committee to continue to talk about the need for a Albany resilience hub at the Albany Community Center. I know there was a discussion several months ago, August, and then September, and then there's never been any report about what happened with the discussions that I assume were taken up with Ava Community Energy. So the last thing I saw was that Ava had a meeting two weeks ago, and they put out a shortlist of 10 communities that they're going to consider for the resilience hub funding, which initially starts out with technical assistance. And Albany was not on it. So I don't know if that means that there's a second tranche, or if there's another way for Albany to get involved, but I think in any case, Albany needs to move forward and create a committee and work on developing a plan, part of the strategic plan if necessary, or the climate action plan if necessary, to actually produce a real, live resilience hub at the Albany Community Center, since we have nothing in the City of Albany that even remotely resembles that. The other item that seems to have come up is the need for EV charging stations of some sort, either Level 1 or Level 2, in multifamily housing. So I believe Lucinda Young has been sharing her charging with members of a multifamily system, somebody who lives nearby, because they cannot find any public charging in the City of Albany. So that's two needs, both the public charging and the multifamily charging. And I know that there is a plan being put forward for multifamily. I hope that it's possible to find ways to expand it and to make it grow more quickly. For some reason, there's millions of dollars going into other places in the county and in California, but Albany just isn't one of them. And this should be a priority item for the City of Albany. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. This is Lucinda Young. I also am an Albany Climate Action Coalition member, and had a couple of things I wanted to comment on tonight. At the end of October, Albany Climate Action Coalition volunteers distributed flyers notifying residents about the Free Street Tree Program, which had an October 31 deadline for 25, 2026 planting. And we distributed homes that appeared to have room for a street tree in all neighborhoods except for three neighborhoods that we didn't get to. Those were the neighborhoods that have the greatest street tree canopy. But a problem that we noticed that we wanted to make the city aware of is there are a lot of apartment buildings around Albany that have no street trees, although there is room for them, and we have no way to access those owners, you know, leaving a flyer at the building is unlikely to reach the owner. So we just wanted to suggest the city consider doing some outreach to those apartment building owners. In another matter, I expect you're all aware that the federal tax credit for solar battery and heat pumps is expiring at the end of this year. That's been a big incentive advancing our city's climate action plan and the state's climate goals. That credit was supposed to last until 2032, but as you all know, it was repealed in July as part of the federal administration's assault on clean energy. So what is happening right now is homeowners and contractors are scrambling to get solar battery and heat pumps installed for the year-end. And, you know, one way the city could help is by prioritizing applications for these permits for solar battery and heat pumps between now and year-end. I don't know if that's something that we can do, can be done, you know, through administrative action without City Council approval, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I know there are some cities on the peninsula that have for some time been prioritizing applications for permits for heat pumps. Getting these installations in would help us achieve our climate goals. And lastly, on EV charging, I have spoken before about the need for publicly available EV charging to support our residents who live in multifamily housing, and I want to echo that again. As Jean Wu previously spoke, I'm a participant in EV Match, which is an app that makes, allows private EV chargers available to the public. And so the people that come to use my charger are all folks who live in multifamily housing. And it's very, very difficult to find, number one, affordable and convenient access. And with half our residents in multifamily housing
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our public comment portion of this meeting. I will now move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and can be acted in one motion. Looking at City Council, if anyone's looking to pull an item from the consent calendar. Not seeing none, anyone from the public. It's pretty empty out here. Looking for a motion.
I'll move consent.
I will second.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. That now moves us on to item number eight. Presentation by Senator Jesse Aragüe for State Legislative Update, and I believe we have our senator online right now.
Good evening.
Welcome, Senator.
And one of my staff people, Sal Harkins, is going to be controlling the slides. If he can be promoted to panelists as well. Thank you.
Yes.
And while he is bringing up the slide deck presentation, I just want to say thank you, Mayor Lopez, and members of the Albany City Council for this opportunity to update you as your new representative in the California State Senate about my work and the work of the state legislature this past year and addressing our region or state's priorities. It's an honor to represent Albany in the State Senate after 20 years of service in the City of Berkeley government, including on the City Council and the Mayor of Berkeley, and work at the regional level as the president of the Association of Bay Area Governments, where I've got the opportunity to work with many of you on regional initiatives, whether it's helping found East Bay Community Energy, the work we've done around trying to ensure that we have a full-service hospital to serve the broader East Bay community, as well as steps to address climate change and resilience. I look forward to supporting those regional initiatives and the priorities of the City of Albany next year as your representative in Sacramento. And with that, we can move to the next slide. So I want to touch upon some of the work that the state has done over the past year to specifically support the needs of the City of Albany. As you know, California has been prioritizing housing development, supporting local communities, and achieving our state's housing goals. And one major project here in Albany is the Veronica Hill Project, which just opened last year, 16-year building to provide affordable housing for rural low-income households, 20% to 60% of the area median income. The state contributed $9.4 million to the project through the state Housing Community Development Department's No Place Like Home Fund to specifically support the needs of people who have experienced homelessness and who have mental health needs as well. We're also working to support various infrastructure projects, thanks to the passage of Prop 68 in 2018, to support parks and climate resiliency projects. This year, funding was awarded to several projects to improve amenities at Memorial Park. And with regard to improving our streetscapes and street safety, I just want to touch on the Gilman Interchange Project, something that I was very proud to work with many of you on when I was the Mayor of Berkeley and on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, which finally provides a secondary linkage to the Bay Trail and a full bike and ped connection, as well as improving the safety of that critical intersection at Gilman Street, which serves both the residents of Albany and the residents of Berkeley as well. And funding has been provided from a variety of state funding sources to also provide improvements to Marin Avenue to improve circulation and safety on Marin Avenue as well. And particularly, would welcome any input that you may have, you know, in your comments or even after today's presentation, on any budget priorities that Albany has as we go into next year's budget cycle. On immigration, and I just want to lift up that, you know, Albany, like many cities in Senate District 7, has sanctuary policies to protect our residents from immigration enforcement, ensure that our communities are safe spaces. And that's because California is the largest immigrant population in the nation, with over 1 in 4 residents being foreign-born, and almost half of children having at least one immigrant parent. Immigration is essential to our state's economy. Sadly, the Trump administration's inhumane and unconstitutional war on immigrants, on immigrant communities, has created a chilling effect throughout our state, including here in the Bay Area. It wasn't too long ago, just last month, that we heard reports of planned region-wide immigration enforcement action. I know many of us work to contact our constituents and our community-based organizations to not just let people know what their rights are, but to make sure that we can coordinate to provide support for people if they are arrested by ICE or federal agents. Sadly, this is going to be a reality in the coming weeks and months. And so we have to do everything we can to support our immigrant and refugee communities, which are under attack by the Trump administration. And I'm just proud to say that one of the first votes I took in the California State Senate, it's part of the Governor's Special Session that was called right after the November election, was to allocate $50 million of emergency funding to help ensure that our Attorney General can take legal action against the Trump administration. To date, we filed over 40 lawsuits. Over 80% of those lawsuits have been successful, unfreezing billions of dollars of federal money for education, for health, for healthcare, for transportation projects, for other critical needs for our state. Remember that California is the largest donor state in the United States, yet the federal government has declared war in California and has worked through policies and through efforts to try to freeze federal funding, to take away our tax dollars that we are paying to the federal government to support critical needs like education and health and human services. The state of California will continue to fight these efforts to ensure that this money is going back to California to support our state. And of that $15 million, $25 million went to provide legal assistance and rapid response services for our community-based providers throughout the state of California, including here in Alameda County, such as Century League Al. here in Alameda County, such as Century Legal and AccuDeer, to help ensure that we can provide rapid response resources and legal representation for people if they are detained by ICE and the subject of federal civil immigration enforcement. The legislature also passed a number of laws to strengthen protections for immigrant communities, including SB 81, which was actually the first bill I authored and also the first bill was signed by the governor, which creates protections for our hospitals and healthcare facilities from immigration enforcement, to ensure that ICE cannot come into the non-public areas of hospitals and health facilities and protect patient privacy, including information on immigration status as part of immigration enforcement. In addition, the state passed legislation to protect our schools from immigration enforcement, to ensure that we have protections around data sharing and data privacy, to make sure that we have stronger protection to protect critical, sensitive personal information and to ensure that our hospitals and health facilities and schools and other sensitive areas are protected in California. On the issue of public safety, if we can move to the next slide, I was very honored to chair the Senate's Committee on Public Safety this year. And, you know, when I ran for Senate last year, public safety, addressing crime, ensuring that we can create safer communities was one of the top concerns I heard from residents, including in Albany. And so that was a key focus of the work of the Senate this last year, not only in the implementation of Prop 36, making sure that we allocated $100 million to make sure that we can expand treatment, and that's, that's an initial investment that we hope to build on next year, because we know that treatment resources are significantly lacking in California, but also a variety of laws to strengthen firearm and gun safety regulations, to provide protections against kids, where the subject of human trafficking, to protect women that are being targeted by sexual violence in our prisons and our communities, and to also strengthen protections in a variety of ways for communities throughout California. I believe that we need to advance a holistic approach to public safety that's focused not just on accountability and enforcement to make sure we have safer neighborhoods, but also investing in the long-term solutions, including community-based violence prevention programs that will get guns off the street and create safer communities. We need, we need to advance both of those, those strategies to create a safer California. I just want to lift up one bill that I authored, Senate Bill 704, which regulates the sale of firearm barrels. And so we know that ghost guns are increasingly common in communities throughout California. So, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. And so ghost guns account for roughly 70% of the guns that are recovered on California streets. And so now people are actually 3D-printing the components of a gun or to create ghost guns, but the barrel is something that you can't 3D-print. So people are separately buying those firearm barrels online as a critical component to assemble illegal ghost guns. And so my bill, Senate Bill 704, would regulate the sale of firearm barrels to ensure that they are done through licensed firearm dealers, that people have to undergo background checks as a way to provide a further protection against the proliferation of illegal ghost guns in California. Lastly, I just want to also mention a bill that I was proud to co-author, Senate Bill 627, the No Secret Police Act, which I co-authored with my colleague Senator Scott Weiner, that prohibits local and federal law enforcement from wearing masks or face coverings to conceal their identity in the course of their official duty, with some exceptions. And this is, this was really prompted by the images of masked ICE agents and Border Patrol agents in Los Angeles and throughout the state of California that were covering their face to hide their identity and engaging in assault, the violation of people's due processing constitutional rights. We need to protect our law enforcement, but we also need accountability and transparency to protect our communities as well. And regional coordination, I think, is also critical in terms of our approach to public safety. And I want to lift up the work of our California Highway Patrol, who have deployed resources not just in Oakland, but are working regionally with all law enforcement agencies to coordinate a regional response. On health and human services, if we can go briefly to the next slide, I was also honored to chair the Senate Committee on Human Services. I just want to preface my comments with what we saw over the past couple of months. As part of the ongoing government shutdown, the federal government, for the first time in over 60 years, decided not to provide SNAP benefits to Americans. Fortunately, California took immediate action as soon as there was a court decision to get those benefit dollars out the door so that no Californian would be without the benefits, but we know that this administration truly believes that food and healthcare are political bargaining chips, that people should not have access to food. And so the legislature has, in a bipartisan fashion, urged Congress to reverse the cuts to SNAP while we are working as, as the process of developing the budget for 2026, to increase funding for food banks and also to increase funding for our statewide food security programs to offset some of the cuts and the impact that's going to have on Californians who so desperately need these benefits. We know that we're not going to be able to offset the full impact, but we need to work to make sure that we can mitigate as much as possible those impacts so that no kid and no family in California goes hungry. In addition, there are several bills that we are willing to advance to provide protections for people who are becoming unemployed due to mass layoffs, to make sure that there's information about what their rights and what resources are available. That was Senate Bill 617. And Senate Bill 792 would expand eligibility for state childcare programs for low-income families. Briefly on transportation, we know that since COVID, art and major transit operators, including AC Transit, are facing a fiscal cliff. Decreased ridership and increased costs have strained budgets, and one-time emergency funding from both the federal and state government, that money is going to go away very soon. So we worked not only to get the governor and the legislature to commit to, set aside $750 million just for this next year to provide a bridge for those transit agencies to make sure that they do not have to make significant service reductions or close stations, but to create a pathway to a long-term plan, which is Senate Bill 63, which allows the region to place on the ballot a regional sales tax measure, to provide 14 years of funding for operations for all of our major and smaller transit operators throughout the Bay Area, but also provide an opportunity to reimagine and to improve transit, to make it more seamless, to make it more integrated, and to make it more safe as well. I think that, that we shouldn't just invest in what we have, but work to make that better as well. And one component of Senate Bill 63 is the requirement that there be, one, a financial efficiency review to look at how these agencies can find greater cost efficiencies and look at consolidation and improving operations, but also funding other improvements for transit transformation, such as coordinating air schedules, working to improve affordability and efficiency and service so that we can improve transit in the Bay Area as well. On climate and environment, I just want to preface my comments, if we go to the next slide, that we began the year with some of the most destructive fires in California's history, with the Eaton and Palisades fires destroying thousands of homes in Los Angeles' area. So in response, the legislature took immediate action, allocate $2.5 billion for relief and rebuilding, as well as advancing a package of bills to address wildfire safety, prevention, and response. In addition, the state has allocated billions of dollars of funding, not just from Proposition 4, the climate bomb that voters passed last year, but also money from the new Cap and Invest program and from the general fund, to expand efforts to increase our firefighter workforce, to reduce vegetation, and to harden homes to make sure that we can create a fire-stake communities throughout California. Those of us who live in the East Bay remember the 1991 Berkeley-Oakland firestorm. We know that our East Bay communities are not immune from wildfire risk. And so my commitment as your representative in Sacramento is to make sure that we can secure some of those state dollars for fuel reduction and fire prevention projects here in the East Bay, because we saw what happened in Los Angeles, urban wildfire risk is real. In addition, the state advanced a number of critical climate bills, including an extension of the state's Cap and Trade Program, now called Cap and Invest, which, over the next 20 years, will provide consumers $63 billion in credits to electricity bills, including an average of $61 per household on, on a billing cycle, as well as $60 to $90 billion for a variety of environmental infrastructure projects, including affordable housing. I want to lift up something we heard from a speaker during public comment around the loss of federal EV credits. The money that we are, will be able to, to invest through Cap and Invest, including money that's going to be a discretionary fund that the legislature will program on an annual basis, that provides an opportunity for the state to have an ongoing revenue source even during difficult budget times, to be able to invest in things like EV incentives and other climate initiatives, which are critical for the state to continue its climate leadership. And I just want to acknowledge, I know that the Albany City Council passed a resolution in support of various polluter-paid bills. And I want to make my commitment to you and to the residents of Albany, that when those bills come to a vote next year, I intend to vote to pass that polluter-paid legislation. On housing and homelessness, I want to just lift up the work that Albany has done, in particular, to build affordable housing in Albany. And the state is continuing its efforts to not just look at ways to streamline production through a variety of bills. I had a bill, Senate Bill 9, that's around how we can streamline and enforce state ADU law. But also, there was a package of bills that were looked at how we can streamline the permitting process to get homes built faster and more affordably in California. And also, as part of the Cap and Invest program, the state not only continued its commitment in its critical housing programs, like the multifamily housing program and the affordable housing and sustainable communities program, but also we are doing everything we can to increase our investment in mental health beds and permanent supportive housing through the passage of Proposition 1 as well. So in closing, it's been a very busy, as well as incredibly important and impactful year in Sacramento and in California. I look forward to the continued partnership and collaboration with the city of Albany. This is the information, how residents can contact my office if they have any questions, ideas for legislation, or any help in accessing state services. We're here to serve you. With that, I want to turn it back over to the mayor and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator, for the presentation. Do we have any questions from members of the council for the senator regarding his presentation at this time?
Let me ask about other things.
Yeah, go for it.
Senator, thank you for being with us tonight. Could you please catch us up on the Sutter Hospital, the rebuilding, or the building? You knew, you knew I'd ask that, right?
And I want to thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor McQuaid, for your years of partnership on this issue. So as we know, early this year, Sutter Health announced that they plan on building a new hospital in the city of Emeryville, not too far away from the current Altibates Hospital site in Berkeley. They intend to replace all the services that are currently being provided at the Berkeley Hospital, including birthing and delivery. At the present time, they're proposing a 200-bed facility, but I think there's conversation around, around how big of a facility it will be. And so I have it, I have introduced legislation, Senate Bill 830, to create a streamlined sequel process so that, that hospital project can get built much more expeditiously, because we have, well, we have roughly four years between now and 2030, when the state is requiring that every full-service hospital has to be seismically safe. And so Sutter has said, sadly, I think much to our disappointment, they do not intend to retrofit the current Berkeley Hospital, but they had made the decision that they want to build a new hospital not too far away, which is also accessible from the 80 freeway. And so my goal as the representative of this district is to make sure that we get that hospital built as quickly as possible, that we make sure that it is comparable to the current size of the current hospital, we're not losing beds, and also that we, that we maintain the existing facilities that are being provided at that hospital. So we've been working with the labor rep, the labor groups, representatives of labor groups, who, SEIU and California Nurses Association, and Sutter Health, to facilitate conversations about what that plan is, what the workforce transition will be. And we'll be working to advance legislation this, this next year to help speed up that process so we can get that hospital built probably 2031, or maybe 2032 at the latest. That will necessitate that the state needs to extend, just for that one hospital, the timeline for seismic compliance, and that's something that I think will be discussed this year in the state legislature. So Sutter still is planning on moving the project forward. We're working with them to try to expedite the process while we're working to make sure that we, that we maintain, if not expand, the scope of services that are being provided at that new hospital facility.
Thank you very much, Senator. I did have a question when you, well, again, one, thank you again for providing us a high-level overview on where the state has been able to provide support, especially at the local level. I think it's always a refreshing reminder to know how, at the state level, well, nowhere, and being put in really sticky situations with a mortgage lender for not having coverage. Just, and maybe that's more of a conversation with our attorney general, but I think this is something that definitely warrants attention for our community.
Thank you for bringing that up. There is a lot of work that is happening through the Department of Insurance by our attorney general, our insurance commissioner, Ricardo Lara, advanced a proposal called the Sustainable Insurance Plan, to advance a number of proposals, such as allowing for some rate increases, expanding the rate review process, I'm looking at risk modeling. And so those policy changes are underway at the Department of Insurance, but the legislature is also acting as well. There were a number of bills that we had advanced this year around trying to have some accountability from the Department of Insurance and the insurance industry on coverage drops and rate increases, and also to make sure that communities and homeowners that are doing the home hardening and the work to make their homes and neighborhoods safer, that they are going to have a guarantee that they're going to be covered. What I've been hearing are people that are not even in the wild and urban interface, live in the, in the Berkeley flatlands or the Oakland flatlands, who are being dropped as well. We know that the Fair Plan is not sustainable, so the legislature did pass legislation that was advanced by Speaker Robert Rivas to provide an opportunity for the state to issue bonds to backfill some of the, the gap in funding for the Fair Plan to make sure that we can cover losses. But long-term, the Fair Plan, one, is more expensive, and two, is not a sustainable solution to provide coverage for people in our state. So please know that this is a priority of mine. There's work that's already underway, there's legislation that, that has advanced, and I think, as I referenced previously, the polluter pay legislation is also tied to the concept that companies that are fueling the climate emergency, who are causing these catastrophic wildfires, that they should pay a cost. I think that cost should go towards helping mitigate the climate impacts as well as ensure that people have access to affordable insurance as well. So these are all things that will continue to be a focus of not just myself, but the state legislature, and know that there is, are changes underway. And hopefully, we'll see more companies come back to California and want to underwrite policies, but there needs to be a guarantee that if people do the right thing, they make their, their homes and neighborhoods safer, that they get covered as well.
Appreciate that, thank you. And before I ask if anyone else on the dice has any further questions, also just want to give a shout out to you and your staff for ensuring that you had an office in Richmond, my hometown, an area that has historically been neglected in terms of senator representation. And to be able to know that, you know, there's multiple offices and one that's accessible to many folks with, in Albany, El Cerrito, Richmond, San Pablo area speaks volumes to your level of engagement and leadership in being able to connect with the communities. So just wanted to give a shout out for that, appreciate that. Do we have any additional questions from members on council? All right, we'll bring it to.
I had one additional thing. You know, I know that we're, we're all engaged in conversations in the future of Golden Gate Fields, and I just want to commit to you that whatever happens, we need to make sure that the, the priorities of Berkeley and Albany are, are really driving the plan for what's going to happen at Golden Gate Fields. This is an incredible opportunity. It is the largest opportunity for a regional shoreline and open space in the East Bay to connect to the east shore parks, to connect the Bay Trail, but it's also an opportunity to connect to the East Shore Parks, to connect the Bay Trail, but it's also an opportunity to expand recreational open space, also recognizing that Albany also needs to ensure that there's some commercial component to make sure that there's not a significant loss to your tax revenue as well, as I've had in many conversations with members of the Albany City Council. I just want to lift up that, under the expenditure plan that was approved as part of the budget, $62 million has been earmarked for coastal resilience projects, and specifically, in addition to that, $40 million for projects in the San Francisco Bay. So I think there are some opportunities with increased state funding to support whatever vision or plan comes out in the public process for Golden Gate Fields, and I look forward to working with Albany to help secure that funding to make that project a reality.
Thank you. I think we all look forward to working with you on that as well. Councilmember Jordan?
I have some comments for the Senator after public comment, if you want to take public comment.
Yeah. So let's go ahead and take public comments. I see we have one in the room.
Thank you. I would like a little more elaboration on Golden Gate Fields. What is being negotiated? Who is the party for the state that is in negotiations with the Golden Gate Fields ownership? And when you made a statement regarding, you understood that Golden Gate Fields has a very important role in the fiscal sustainability of the city of Albany. What is your understanding is that the amount of income that we presently get for the city and schools, are you aware of the exact amount that we receive now and what we received when it was operating in full capacity in the last five years, maybe on average, so that we know that that would be sustained in any project that the state would get involved in? Because otherwise, it just sounds like we could get lost in the shuffle unless there's some hard numbers that you're aware of, that you're willing to fight for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I see we have, looks like, three more online. We'll save time for the Senator to answer questions after comments.
This is Lucinda Young, Albany resident. I'm going to be very brief. I just want to give a big thank you and shout out for your commitment tonight to support the Make Polluters Pay bill, which many people consider the single most important piece of climate legislation that passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, this is Amy Smolins. Thanks, Senator Arguin, for mentioning Golden Gate Fields. That's crucial to Albany's fiscal sustainability, and I really look forward to becoming involved in that process, whatever that is, as it moves forward. And just in general, thanks for supporting our district, representing our district, including Albany, especially given the lack of support from our federal administration. So we're all counting on you and appreciate your work. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm with the Albany Climate Action Coalition, and again, we totally support what you've been doing in the Senate. I wanted to put in a couple of words about Golden Gate Fields. It is an extraordinary opportunity, and it would be something that we could look at not only in terms of recreation, but also in terms of electrification and providing EV charging and some points between 2 and 3 megawatts of solar power, community-based solar, for instance, as well as battery sustainable solutions, so that it could be a part of an overall regional resilience kind of situation for Berkeley and Albany because it is so large. And if it provided, in addition to that, funding for the city of Albany, then that would help to keep Albany's finances whole. But I think because there is so much property, that we could easily see 2 to 3 megawatts of solar power and battery storage and provide a resilience center for the whole Berkeley, Emeryville, El Cerrito, and Albany situation. We need to think regionally as well as locally. And if there is, in fact, funding available, I think we should look at it very closely to see how we can support a more regional approach. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that concludes public comment. And I know it sounds like there's several questions around Golden Gate Fields. Just want to emphasize and stress that, you know, there may be limitations on what we discuss. And, you know, certainly myself, there is a significant amount that I am not allowed to share or to digress into, and I imagine maybe the same for the Senator. To the extent that you feel comfortable, you are more than welcome to field any of those questions.
Would this be appropriate time to respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to wait, do you want to wait for the councilmembers to make their comments first?
No, this isn't appropriate time.
Okay, well, good to hear from you, Amy, and good to see you, Francisco. So I'm not going to prescribe what should happen at Golden Gate Fields. That needs to be through a community process, and Albany needs to vote specifically in amending its plan. And Berkeley will have to amend its waterfront plan as well. But I absolutely want to ensure that Albany is not in a deficit position because of lost revenues, tax revenue. And so I've heard on the range of about $2 million on average that came from, you know, the previous Golden Gate Fields uses. You know, ultimately, I think that's information we need from the city of Albany with regard to what was the sort of average tax receipts, as well as what are the current receipts, knowing that there's not full use of the site, but there's some taxes that are being paid, because we need to consider that with regard to what the vision is for the site. That is a sizable amount of money that goes to Albany's general fund, and we don't want to, we don't want to see a loss. But we also want to prioritize recreation and open space, things that the community has already articulated, and whatever comes out of that community process. So ultimately, you know, it's a private parcel. The owner could sell it to whoever. We want to make sure that whatever happens and whoever buys the property, that the community's needs and the community's vision centers what happens there. And I want to continue to work with the leadership of Albany and Berkeley to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. And I think, Councilmember Jordan, you had a discussion point?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator, for spending so much time with us this evening. I have two requests for state law changes, which are small in words, but perhaps consequential. One of them is, we learned, because some of us received our voter information guides from the county weeks after we received our ballots in the last election. You may have read about this in Berkeley side. This was commonly reported in North Oakland's Berkeley and Albany. And we learned from our registrar that by state law, those guides, the deadline to mail those guides is a week after the first day that ballots can be mailed. And the registrar does mail those ballots on the first day, and so the voter information guides by state law come at some time after the ballots arrive, which is obviously not good for an informed electorate. So I would ask that you consider carrying legislation to move that deadline forward. I can see that it would have made sense in the past, pre-pandemic, when so-called absentee ballots were not particularly common. But now that essentially everybody votes with that ballot that they get in the mail at various times, it no longer makes sense. So I hope that you will consider pursuing that legislation for the benefit of our democracy. And then, on another item, speaking for one school board member, and noting that all school districts in your district, except for John Swett, which has a part of Rodeo, have property taxes. The education code has a number of optional provisions that school boards can consider including in their property tax measures to provide tax relief. Unfortunately, there is not a provision to provide tax relief based purely on household income. There's a provision to provide tax relief to seniors without regard to income. Some seniors have very high incomes, but, you know, they can still get tax relief. And there's a variety of other provisions, but there is not a provision for means-based tax relief. I would ask that you add that to the education code so that all the school districts within your district have the option to consider including that provision, affordability and for equity into their tax measures. And I'm happy to confer with you on other of those and generate support and do whatever I can to make it happen.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan. Those are all really excellent ideas. You know, on the voter information pamphlet timeline, I agree with you. And that may require that we have to tweak some of the timelines as well in terms of implementation of the election. Because, for example, when people file and when ballot statements and ballot measure statements are due is really driven by the timeline for the voter information pamphlet, but I agree with you. I'll just say, for example, in the general election that happened in 2024, I lived in Berkeley, we didn't get the voter information pamphlet for that election until at least a week after the ballots were received. So how does that help people who we have, especially in a community that may have like seven or eight ballot measures, want to do their due diligence and make an informed decision about what's on the ballot? That's not helpful. And I agree with you that the ship to vote by mail, I think, does change that dynamic as well. So I think that's an excellent suggestion. I'm happy to explore that. And I'm sure the legal and voters of California would also probably be supportive of that as well. And to your point around looking at a low-income exemption, similar to what local governments can do for partial tax measures, I think that makes a lot of sense as well.
Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have any other discussion point for Senator? Not seeing any. I'll close it out and say thank you again, Senator Arguin, for joining us this evening and for being so patient. We always appreciate it and more than welcome you to come back at a future date if you so wish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Definitely look forward to coming back next year to kind of update you on what we did. Please reach out. I think all of you most likely have my cellphone, personal cellphone, but also please feel free to reach out to my staff if you have any ideas on legislation or budget priorities. You know, we're here to serve you. And just, I did listen to your study session on the tenant protections and rental assistance.
Uh-oh.
And just want to lift up that I love local government. I miss local government. That there are conversations around, you know, the extension of Assembly Bill 1482, the Tenant Protection Act, that we're going to begin some of those conversations next year with tenant advocates and with property owner advocates, so that we can bring the parties to the table, so that we can consider that legislation in a future year. And additionally, the housing bond, which is, you know, being advanced right now, I think is going to be another critical step to increase resources for affordable housing and for preservation of housing as well. And I believe that we also need to look at some sort of statewide proposal to provide statewide rental assistance for small landlords and for low-income tenants in California who are significantly rent burdened. So more to come on that, but I just want to lift up that those, I did hear those concerns, and those are things that we are actively discussing in Sacramento.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And again, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. With that said, that closes out this item. We all now move on to individual council member reports. And I'll start on this side with Councilmember Hans Romero.
Fortunately, I was unable to make the last meeting at the last minute, so I don't have any updates for you tonight.
All good. Councilmember Jordan?
The Alameda County Transportation Commission is meeting next week. It's the holiday schedule, so no report there. And at this time, I'll leave the mosquito report. Until next time, I didn't bring my pet this time.
I feel like every time you mention mosquito report, they magically show up. Your pet was on this side of the room earlier. I got nervous. Councilmember Mickey?
Nothing to report, except that Councilmember Jordan's pet was over here earlier, was.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Nothing this time.
All right. As for me, additionally, nothing to report at this time, other than I had a really restful Thanksgiving break for once, and I hope you all did as well. And with that said, closes out item number 12. We'll move on to future agenda items. Do any of the council members wish to pose any item for future agenda? I have one. I know I couldn't bring this up earlier during our study session, but I think it is tangentially relevant, that I would like council to explore looking at act rates for short-term rentals like Airbnb and Verbo, among others. I think that is something that we could, may be a potential benefit of having a rental registry to then understand what we have in terms of short-term rentals in the city, and how those who are participating in short-term rentals can also be held accountable, or not maybe paying their proper share, but I digress. But I would love to see that, the future agenda item. That said, not seeing any further item from members on the council. Do we have any members of the public that wish to contribute to future agenda item? Not seeing any. As always, all future meetings are, can be found on our city website. And with that said, blows out our meeting. Good night, folks.